One person on this slide, the other person on this slide have one.
Yeah.
So probably that's what.
Please rise.
Right.
For personal play.
With allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, the third world dollar for which it stands, a nation under God, committed by justice for all.
Lord, as we enter the new year, let us experience the beauty of prosperity for this city. Let there be world peace and the end of terrorism. Let the element of crime cease, and all people live in harmony and respect each other. Amen.
Clerk call a roll?
Mayor Stafford.
Here.
Alderman Lincoln.
Here.
Alderman Sahaski.
Here.
Alderman Weston.
Here.
Alderman Cavallaro.
Here.
Alderman Thompson.
Here.
Alderman Woodward.
Here.
City Attorney David Hawthorne.
Here.
I'll present, Your Honor.
Thank you. Tonight, before we get into the agenda, we have an event that doesn't happen very often. What, once every six years, is it?
Yes.
Your Honor? Our city judge-elect is going to be sworn in. And Judge Morbeto is going to do the honors on this. Your family's going to come?
Yes, sir.
To be with you? Please come forward, and we will get this part of the presentation done.
I, Spencer J. Luddington.
I, Spencer J. Luddington.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And the City Code of the City of Fulton.
The City Code of the City of Fulton.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As Fulton City Court Judge.
As Fulton City Court Judge.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. Watch the wires.
All right, thank you for everything you've done for which we'll fix more here.
Thank you.
Good for the committee.
Thank you. I just have a couple things to say. Thank you so much for coming out in this wild night, you've been a big draw. And things are pretty exciting, but it's really an honor and a pleasure to serve as Fulton City Court Judge. I really enjoy the position, and I'm thankful and appreciate the support that I receive, both from the my family, of course, and the people of the city of Fulton. It's been a great difference, six years brings. It certainly was a lot different six years ago. And certainly, it seemed as though maybe six years, the citizens of Fulton suggested, well, let's give them a chance. It seems now that hopefully their thoughts are that he's done a good job, let's give him another chance. And I hope to serve as diligently and as faithfully as I hope I have in the past six years. We're really blessed in Fulton City Court, and some of the staff is here. We have a chief court clerk, Linda Royce Jones. Maureen Ball is here. Cassie Kinney. Jennifer Cooper. And I'm quite sincere when I tell you that if they had the Olympic Games or city courts, there are sixty-two city courts in the state of New York, Fulton City Court would increasingly get most of the gold medals. When you call and you have a problem, and most people who ever go to court will go to a city court, when you call these ladies, you get an answer, you'll get their name. There's no, we don't have answering machines, we have no voicemail. You talk to a human being. If they can't answer the problem or get to the bottom of it, they'll tell you, they'll call you back, and they do. And it's really a blessing in a society with too much bureaucracy and too much red tape. These ladies stick their neck out every day. And it's not an easy task, because as you might suspect, we deal with some pretty difficult people. And sometimes we deal with wonderful people who are in the worst times of their lives, or stressed emotionally and so forth, financially, et cetera. And they do a fantastic job of dealing with the public. So we're really extremely blessed with these staff members that we have here in Fulton City Court. They're so important that it's not uncommon for many of the other courts to actually send staff members to Fulton City Court to essentially learn how it's done. So I'm really pleased that they're able to step up to the plate and get the job done. They make my job much, much, much easier. I want to thank my wife, who suffers through a lot of difficult times in this position. And without her support, I wouldn't be here today. And of course, my daughter, Julia, who gives me a lot of encouragement to move forward and gives me a lot of hope. And she wants me to thank my dog, Harry, I'm not sure what. He keeps me, he keeps me walking, hopefully attempting to stay slimmer than I have to be. And I really couldn't be here without the support of my mother and father, and especially my dad, who encouraged me. I can always hear his words, "Don't get discouraged," and those literally every day. So I really appreciate the father's support, because without him, without his drive and ambition and willingness to support me and my mother, I would not be here today. So without any, enough of all that, again, I want to thank you and appreciate you, and I enjoy serving the city.
Item number one.
Resolved at the minutes of council meeting, December seventeenth and December twenty-sixth, hereby approved.
Motion?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Next item.
Resolved that the reappointment by Mayor Stafford of Marion Stanton to the Library Board effective January first, two thousand and three, to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and five, hereby approved.
Motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Next item.
Resolved that the appointment by Mayor Stafford of Mr. John Crook, Fulton Library Board, to fill the unexpired term of Charles Zesowski, effective January first, two thousand and three, to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and three.
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolved that the appointment by Mayor Stafford of Don Ciccarelli, to Fulton Library Board, to fill the expired term of Muriel Allerton, effective January first, two thousand and three, and to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and five, is hereby approved.
Motion?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
We need a, we need a motion for...
We need a motion to nominate the President of the Council.
Mayor?
Your Honor?
I would like to go first, if you don't mind.
Oh, okay.
I would like to nominate Sixth Ward Alderman Ronald Woodward, become council president.
I second that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are there any further nominations?
No.
No other nominations. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion is carried. Congratulations, Alderman Woodward.
Thank you very much.
I also would like to add that we appreciate the efforts of Alderman Thompson. Those years as president of council.
Quite memorable.
Yes, thank you very much for your service. Next item.
Resolved Fulton Patriot is hereby designated as the official newspaper for the City of Fulton, effective January one, two thousand and three through December thirty-first, two thousand and three.
Motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolved the city clerk is hereby authorized to sign the two thousand and three maintenance contract between the City of Fulton and Icon Office Solutions, with a canon copier, the maintenance agreement, effective January one, two thousand and three. It expired December thirty-first, two thousand and three, in the amount of two thousand five hundred and thirteen dollars. Said item is a budgeted item.
Motion?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to sign the agreement between the City of Fulton and Central Veswigo, the amount of twenty thousand dollars, to provide bus transportation service in the City of Fulton, effective January one, two thousand and three, and to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and three. This is a budgeted item.
Does anybody, anybody know the figure that, has twenty thousand been that figure for?
A long time.
Long time?
Long time, has been.
Yeah, you know, Your Honor, this got to happen now, I know that, because it's late. But sometime, I'd like to have them in to talk to them and see just what... You know, I know they do a lot with the seniors in different buildings. But I get a lot of comments about the buses that go around the city, that are empty all the time in the neighborhood. And I was just wondering if, you know, if that's...
They've started to address that by going to smaller buses.
Have they?
Yeah.
Yeah, they have. But well, yeah, I can arrange a meeting for that.
Yeah, I'd just kind of like to know, other than senior units, if, you know...
Okay. Yes, we can bring them in. Do we have a motion?
No, we don't.
Do we have a motion?
I thought we did. I'll do it. I'll move it.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolved that the mayor is authorized to sign a three-year agreement between the City of Fulton and Mentor's Ambulance, Swiggo County Ambulance Service, effective January first, two thousand and three, to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and five, as follows. Two thousand one hundred and thirty-two thousand seven hundred and dollars and fifty-four cents. Two thousand and four, one hundred and thirty-four thousand ninety-six dollars and twenty-three cents. Two thousand and five, one hundred and thirty-five thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and nineteen cents.
Hear a motion?
Is that a one percent increase each year?
I believe it is.
Yep.
Motion?
I'll move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Sixth Ward?
Sixth Ward is opposed.
Motion's carried.
I think we need ambulance service, but I know they provide service to some of the towns that don't pay, at least one. And I'm just wondering if we would still get service if we didn't pay, or if we paid to have. Because I know that the people that use it have to pay to them. So the City of Fulton people are paying twice.
Well, this is based on an investigation that was done some time ago of the alternatives.
Well, I realize that the hundred and thirty thousand is cheaper than providing our own ambulance service, but I just... This goes back a long time. There was a time when both towns were asked to pay a nominal amount, and at that time, neither one of them paid. We carried the whole law. I think since then, one of them has started paying.
One has started paying.
Town to Gramby pays, town to Valerie doesn't.
But I just don't understand why we have to carry the whole law. I mean, our industries aren't here like they used to be, or just doing, doing, and I, I don't know.
Well, as it's in the contract, the cost involved in having competent personnel available seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day.
But I can remember when they came to us and said, "We need to have" one of the guys that we train in the fire department that work for them. You know, we provide the training, and then they go down there and work for them. And they had to have that, what do they call it, Your Honor?
Oh, the advanced?
The advanced life support.
Yeah.
And we paid for that shot, because they used to have to take the patients to the Anadaga County line and change ambulances. But at some point, I think that it ought to be spread around amongst all the towns. It's a service that doesn't just be provided for the City of Fulton. I think we need to be a little more fair with it.
Very good.
Don't get me wrong, I want to think something happens.
I can understand that.
They're gonna, they're gonna keep track of the vote and go.
But for a hundred and thirty thousand, I'm gonna be able to get a helicopter ride, huh? Thank you.
Yes. Next item.
Resolved the mayor is hereby authorized to sign the contract between the City of Fulton and Fulton Historical Society, seven thousand dollars, effective January one, two thousand and three, to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and three.
Motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolved the mayor is hereby authorized to sign a three-year agreement between the City of Fulton and Brandano Displays, in the amount of eighteen thousand seven hundred and seven dollars per year to provide Christmas decorations for the City of Fulton, effective January one, two thousand and three, December thirty-first, two thousand and five.
Before we vote on that, could I be repeating one more time? I know that Joe had some other people that are interested in this.
Yes.
There's two issues I have. Number one, we need to get them to take the lights down, because even though we're not paying any more for the service of the lights, we're paying for the power. We do pay for that on a daily basis.
No, I don't.
We don't?
No.
It did change?
No, that's, that's a blanket one thing.
It didn't used to be.
Yeah, but it is now.
It is now, polls it is.
Oh, okay. All right. But we've got eleven months before we get into this game. Can't we at least see if we can get some votes on it, same sort? They may be the best around.
There are others that are interested.
I've had, I've got a mailing downstairs on someone else, and there is an outfit in a Swiggo, Cooper Decorations, I believe, years ago.
We used to use a different outfit, and then we went to these guys, because they were cheaper.
They kind of creeped up.
But it might not be a lot of money, but it might be worth our while in the next month or so, just to see if we can...
Are you offering a motion to table?
Yes, I am.
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor?
I...
Aye. Can we get to go to bed on that, or can we solicit votes?
I think we can do it as an RFP.
May I say something on this?
Yes.
At budget time, I, I said that I believed that this was a chamber function, and I, I still do. I don't think that the taxpayers should subsidize Christmas decorations for the City of Fulton. I just want to go on record as saying that I did at the budget meeting, and I'm doing so tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Could I ask, Joe, would you be willing, Joe, to get some votes, please? You've got the lighting districts, don't you, you know where they are, don't you?
Mm-hmm.
Could you do that, Mike?
Sure.
And soon as we can, and then we'll put it through.
Great. I think once again, this was, the decorations, Christmas decorations were originally, originated from the Chamber of Commerce, and the businesses paid for those decorations, but then over time, there was less and less business involvement, and then eventually the Chamber turned it over to the city to, to finance. So I know that there is definitely, I can understand Alderman Lincoln's concern that, you know, the city keeps paying for everything that comes down the pipe.
Well, the way it originally was, there was a line item in the budget that went to the Chamber. That was the one that we overturned.
Oh, okay, right.
Right, and they were doing...
And it went towards the Christmas lighting, and they solicited donations to do the rest. And then, when they give the lighting to us, the line item stayed there and in fact grew. That's what that was originally. Not saying that they didn't need it or something else, that's what happened.
Okay, we have a motion to, to table this item, and, and a second. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion table is passed. Next item.
Notation that the appointments by Mayor Stafford to the City of Fulton Tree Committee are hereby entered into the minutes of the council meeting, January seventh, as a matter of record. Jeffrey Hodge, Kathy Trowbridge, Denise Abel, Spencer J. Luddington, Ronald Edick. Their terms start December, or excuse me, January first, two thousand and three, and expire December thirty-first, two thousand and five.
Two of them expired December thirty-first, two thousand and four.
Oh, yes, you're right.
They're a split term.
Denise Abel expires in two thousand and four, and Spencer Luddington on December thirty-first, two thousand and four.
Okay. Next item.
Notation that the reappointment by Mayor Stafford of Barry Ostrander to the Lake Anaduana Shoreline Development Committee, effective January one, two thousand and three, and to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and five, is hereby entered into the minutes of this council meeting of January seventh, two thousand and three, as a matter of record.
Next item.
Notation that the reappointment by Mayor Stafford of Joseph Langlois to the Plumbing and HVAC Board, effective January one, two thousand and three, and to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and five, is hereby entered into the minutes of this council meeting as a matter of record.
Next item.
Resolved that the reappointment by Mayor Stafford of Ronald Patrick to the Board of Assessment and Review, effective October first, two thousand and two, and to expire September thirtieth, two thousand and eight, is hereby approved.
Motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Resolved that the mayor be authorized to sign the standard terms of engagement for legal services with Mentor, Rudin, Trivial Peace, PC, Mentor, regarding environmental issues relating to the closure of the Nestle's plant.
I have a question on this particular item.
Yes.
How was, how was determined as to what law firm we would use? And was, was Jerry Morbeto designated to make the contact?
Jerry Morbeto advised me that he knew someone in a law firm in Syracuse that had served as counsel for DEC, and had experience in this field. And we met with Mr. Fusillo, and he does have the experience necessary in the first part of this, and maybe, maybe it will take care of all of it. He's estimating an expensive neighborhood of five thousand dollars. But he does have the experience with environmental issues. That's what we were, we were looking for, to protect the city going into the closure of the plant.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. Any other questions?
Will he be given a written or verbal report back, or both?
Definitely, definitely verbal, but we will get a written report also. Yes.
I think this is an important step for the council to take, to protect the city's interest and the taxpayer's interest.
Totally. Definitely agree. Is there a motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
Notation that the reappointment of Arthur Jones to the Lake Neanduana Shoreline Development Committee, effective January one, two thousand and three, and expiring December thirty-first, two thousand and five, is entered into the minutes of this council meeting, January seventh, two thousand and three, as a matter of record.
Next item.
Resolved that the City Chamberlain be authorized to transfer eighty-five dollars from the A twenty-seven oh five Gibson donations account into the A twenty-nine eighty-nine point four zero three five DARE account.
We had received two, two donations, one from Chrysler Manufacturing, and one from the Neanduana Sam's Club. The total, the eighty-five dollars, and that is, both of them were earmarked for the DARE program. Motion?
Move it.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Oppose, motion carried. Does anyone in the audience have any business to bring before the council? On the council, first ward.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Second ward.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor, thank you.
Third ward.
Just, Alderman Sahaski myself noticed an outbreak of potholes on West First Street. We've talked to Commissioner Graham, and he has, he said that he's gotten some of those done, and he'll, he'll get the rest of them done within the next couple of days. But all of a sudden, the roads just went, you know, with the, with the freeze and the weather.
Because of the changing in temperatures, the freezing and thawing, it's, it's creating a problem. And over there, from what Commissioner Graham has told me, it is just the top layer that is, it's coming apart there. We need to, definitely, in the spring, that is going to be one of the streets we're going to have to definitely look at seriously for, for repair.
Right. Okay.
Yes.
That's all.
Okay. Fourth ward.
Yes, if I may. After this council agonized over the budget for two thousand and three, I think we're all aware of the difficulties ahead. And I believe we ought to aggressively begin to deal with the issues before us. Therefore, I would like to suggest to the council that we meet as a full committee of the council on the odd Tuesdays of the council meeting. So the second and fourth Tuesdays, twice a month. And we could set the agenda accordingly. I would suggest that we start as early as next Tuesday. I've spoken to some of you about this notion, so I'd like to throw it on the table for discussion, if everyone is willing to do so. I think we have many issues that we have to deal with. And the sooner we get started, hopefully, the more successful we'll be.
You, you had spoke to me, Joe, about it, and I thought it was a good idea, because we do have a lot of critical issues facing this city over the next year or more. And I think that the more input that we can give each other by meeting publicly is the best, the best way to go.
I would suggest too, though, just to keep this in mind, some committees may still need to meet separately. For instance, Water Grievance Committee might meet separately, or legislative body. But on the whole, I think that the committee should meet, perhaps interviewing some of the department heads for suggestions and ideas on how to cut spending and hopefully maybe increase revenues. One of the department heads I spoke to mentioned some fees that were quite a long time in effect and haven't been increased for quite a while. And he was working on that. So things of that nature, I think, could be accomplished if, and if the whole council's present, then everybody has input.
Now, this would be considered a meeting of the individual committees, of the councils?
Some of the committees could operate within that environment. Ron, I think you had a suggestion the other night, or tonight, when you, when you called?
Yeah, I think that first off, I'd like to set a meeting, or first meeting this week with Roger Parsons, because we have some pressing business here. The only thing to keep in mind is, when the whole body meets, it's a public meeting, so
Oh, yes.
the press should always be invited. I think that we should try to go through, and the councils all got ideas, and I know some of the department heads do, and I know some of the union people do. Every, every other week, we should go and give a department head, whatever our ideas are, see what we can do. The problem with ideas, and I've had a lot of them, is you find out you can't do them. But I think that it's good that the council's looking at starting now, in January, and, you know. So I figure next week at six o'clock, if it's all right with the council, I'll, I'll contact Roger Parsons, and we'll, we'll set it up for here.
Okay.
We, we probably would be...
No, we can meet in the conference room, you know. Of course, you're welcome too, Your Honor. David. We should meet with all, all the department heads. But Roger would be the first one, and I'll try to keep...
Six.
You know, if, if you guys want to funnel ideas through me and have me do any of the following up, or... to funnel ideas through me and have me do any of the following up or scheduling meetings, I will do that. Certainly not everybody's going to be able to come every time, I know that. You know how time constraints are. I think this is a good gesture now, to start this early.
We may have to skip the twenty-eighth, because we have the public hearing on in here on the twenty-eighth for the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
The one that is required by the committee. The committee will provide the information on that.
Well, maybe we can go on Wednesday or something. We'll try to do it every other week, and if, you know, if we have any conflicts, we'll try to do it the next week.
Okay, we can work it fine.
The, the comprehensive plan will be presented to the council. Did you all receive copies?
Yeah.
Ed, Ed, you, you're still, you're not, you didn't get the copy of the comprehensive plan?
I'll check. I could have gone in and-
Okay, the draft copy.
I didn't know.
That will be presented to the council on the twenty-first. That'll be the first item on the agenda. We'll try to keep the agenda as short as possible, and present it to the council at that time, and then the public hearing will be on the twenty-eighth, first public hearing. Okay. You have any more, Joe?
Only in terms of, the press is now notified, and I guess if, if there's a meeting time change, as Ron suggested, if instead of twenty-eighth, we meet the twenty-ninth, we might want to be able to give them advance notice.
Well, we could do that through Joe's office.
Sure.
City clerk's office.
Yeah.
Fifth ward.
Would, would President Woodward want us to have, if we are going to have a, a committee meeting of, would we have an agenda ready for, for that night?
Yeah.
Approved, I know, just mention it ahead of time, like, for instance, that I've got two or three items that the Recreation Committee needs to deal with, so we'll be, we'll be conducting one of our committee meetings.
Yeah, that's fine. But also ideas from the council, or even the public. I mean, they can, the public can funnel them to the mayor's office, and when the council meets, they can look at it.
Sure.
I, you know, there's a lot of, lot of input, you know, that comes from the public, and I think that the public is frustrated, because it seems like always budgets are done deal, and that's nothing unique to this administration. It was like that when I was here, and everyone else, because we work on it all the time, and we know what we can do and what we can't do. But I would like to at least try to, to take some of the ideas they have and look at them and get back with an answer and say, you know, we can do these, or we can't do these, and this is why.
That, that, there's a lot of misinformation out there-
That's right.
That I think this will help clear up.
Yeah.
By all means.
I'll try to get an agenda, Bob, but certainly-
No, what I'm saying is that we, we would contact you ahead of time and say that we, we've got two or three items that we need to discuss as a Recreation Committee.
Yes.
I did go up to a Oswego quite some time, when we, we started looking into this before, and they only have four committees in their, in their city organization. And basically, the committee makes a report, and then the mayor, the mayor's there and other councils are there, and they, and they add to it or ask questions, and so there's no, you know, everyone is fully aware of city government, what's going on.
So everybody's, everybody's involved.
Everybody's involved. But, but still, the committee would kind of conduct an agenda, and then-
Right.
As, as a basis of a committee itself.
But you do it similar to what you do right here. Do, do your agenda, and then after somebody has ideas-
I would think if you're going to do them all in the same night, though, I mean, not to be a-
No, you're not.
No, that's the thing, you're not going to ever do that.
You can be here till two in the morning every time.
Right.
You know, there's times that, even tonight, we start our legislative meeting at five thirty, finished at five minutes to seven, we could have been, we could have gone for another four hours.
Yeah, that's true.
Just on one committee.
I think by having them every other week, you're going to be able to address single or just a couple items each committee, and some, sometimes a committee might not have anything to bring forth.
Right.
That's right.
So, but we, we need to control it so it doesn't go into marathons. There's no doubt.
Yeah, that's right.
I think that the night in Oswego, when I was there, they, they dealt with just basically two di- two different issues. That's all. One committee met very quickly, and at the start of the meeting, then another, another committee met.
Anything else?
Are you done, Harley? I, I'd just like to say thanks to the council for, for supporting me for council president. And I'd also like to say thanks to John Lincoln and Bob Weston and Harley, because there's three past council presidents that I've had the honor of working with, and, and three mayors, including yourself. It's been a tough couple of years for Mike, because, I mean, Mike, I was on the committee that realized that because of the complexities of government and mandates, and it gets worse every year, that the mayor needed help. And we come out with the idea of an administrative assistant, and probably at the time that he would have needed it most, we took it away. And then to add insult to injury, we took his secretary away.
It's all up here.
Well, it's, especially in times when, when there's such trying budget times, I mean, I, I think our country is in, for some hard times, and certainly our state is, if you've been watching the governor's messages. And, and hopefully, we can get around to somewhere in the near future to restore that position, because I think it's sorely needed. But this way, if the council can put the extra time in this year, and we can make some headway with the department heads and the public and the unions, that might take some of the burden off here on it, you know?
Certainly would.
I would like to say that I have made the decision not to run again, but I don't want people to think, just to get that lame duck thing in their mind. I will probably work as hard this year, or harder than I ever have, to, to, to try to help out in what's going on here. And I think that, I think it's time to get some new ideas. I mean, I, I've been at this long enough where the, that there, I, you, you know, I've worked enough with people where I get it, you get a mindset, and all of a sudden, somebody